I do apologize for the late start and thank everyone for their patience, but I'd like to go ahead and call the committee of the whole to order. We will start first with the discussion on our January 2nd, 2024 organizational meeting start time. I believe there'd been some talk about some flexibility on the timing of this by charter. We do need to meet on the second. I believe Ms. Bowers had done some digging as to any potential football schedule. I'm hesitant to even say the words, but does January 2nd at 7:00 work for folks?
Yes.
No? No, does not, Ms. McGurk?
No, I said yes, it's fine.
Oh, okay. So then we will plan on the second at 7:00. Next up, public arts policy status update and discussion. My understanding, Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, the panel has been meeting. Minutes are available for those minutes that have been approved. Any update on your end timeline?
Sure. So they met 11:15 was the last meeting. They meet again this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the senior center. Again, that's a public meeting. Anybody is welcome to attend. This will be the fifth meeting of the arts panel over the last six weeks or so. It's my understanding that since the last meeting on November, I was going to say October, November 15th, that two of the panel members were going to be getting together prior to this Wednesday's meeting to prepare a draft of a policy to present to the panel on Wednesday. I've communicated a deadline to them of December 1st to have a recommendation to me for a policy, as it is my expectation that a policy will be adopted by the end of this year. And I've requested a follow-up from them following Wednesday's meeting to determine whether or not any additional extension of that time is warranted, given the fact that they're supposed to be discussing a draft of a policy on Wednesday. So more to come on that. I will inform you as I learn more myself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, next up, items from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Good evening, Director.
Thank you. The item up is for the update, or the, I'm sorry, the changes to the pricing policy. The pricing policy guides the establishment of charges to recreational programs and facilities. The policy is reviewed annually by the Parks and Recreation Board. The changes that were made are minor in nature. They ultimately just help to improve the format of the document. As recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board, the administration is respectfully requesting the resolution to approve the 2024 pricing policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any comment from council?
Director, I did have one question. On page six, can you explain the change? Looks like basically a certification that a qualification for a free and reduced lunch program wouldn't then suffice for a scholarship?
It would. What we have seen is that for an individual similar to a homeschool child, they may not have the opportunity in order to produce a letter from a free or reduced lunch because that's not, that's not something that they have access to. So in order to expand the availability to anyone, we wanted to open up a letter of, any type of letter in order to establish the need.
So there are still opportunities for scholarships?
Absolutely.
Anything further? All right, then, our folks, this is a resolution, so folks okay with the consent agenda on the fourth? All right. Thank you, Director, and thanks to our Parks and Rec Board. Next up, items from the Department of Economic Development.
Yes, Mr. Ritter. Just a point of order. Jeremy, can you confirm that we're live streaming or is there an issue?
We are live streaming. We're just having some camera audio issues. Just make sure you're speaking directly into your mic, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
The item here, ordinance 0084-2023, in ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an amended agreement with the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation, also known as the CIC, and the city to further define the use of funding. At its November 21st CIC meeting, the board unanimously asked to have an amendment to the agreement existing with the city that was approved in February of 2023 and expires in December of 2024. Section 3, Paragraph 2 of the agreement states that the city would pay eligible expenses of the Gehanna Land Bank program, which up until now has been interpreted as only mine land. The requested change in the section would allow other eligible expenses of holding purchased properties such as demolition, security, hazard mitigation, insurance, taxes, utilities, and other typical costs of ownership. All of these expenses are wholly permitted in the ORC. Our CIC is probably one of the most active in central Ohio and is an important and nimble partner of the city and the development department to advance public improvement projects and growth. An example of this is the properties the CIC purchased six or seven years ago at Stigler Road in 62, in case the city undertakes future road improvements in that area. Also, the CIC recently applied for a grant from ODOD that would amount to more than $800,000 to demolish blighted properties in the Creekside area. The CIC will have to participate in the demolition costs, which could be up to $100,000 or more, and we'll find out in February if the CIC has awarded that grant. I think we have a very excellent chance of getting it. As development director, I believe it's important to give the CIC the flexibility it needs to continue pushing for growth that other central Ohio communities and across the state have realized. So therefore, we are asking for the change in the document that will allow purchases of items that are necessary, such as land, and also to pay for the associated costs with those lands over the time that it's being held.
Thank you, Director. Anything from my colleagues?
I do. As the, as one of the council representatives on CIC, I just wanted to actually say that this came before us, and I was trying to read through this quickly. Did this still have the addition of funding requests as part of the agreement?
Well, the, there's funding already in the budget for the CIC annually, so this would allow the CIC to bring forth eligible costs to the finance department for payment. So the money wouldn't necessarily just be transferred to the CIC. They would have to come forth and prove that these expenses are eligible.
But the 2023, I have not paid attention to the 2024. I haven't looked for this specific, a specific item, but the 2023 was 200,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it still the need of the CIC for 200, again, or is it an additional?
Actually, for the 2024 budget, it has been increased to $500,000 with the thought that there would be more properties available for purchase in Creekside and other areas around town for Creekside development or other necessary development projects as they become available.
The $200,000 that's in the 2023 budget has been, was appropriated when the budget was approved. So for 2024, we did have the conversation internally that if it was 200 or even 300,000 for 2024 and a property became available for sale, the likelihood of us being able to buy something at this, with this market was slim to none. So we did increase it to the request for 500,000 for CIC for 2024. That's not to say that we would ever need that in bulk, but that is the increase that's in the 2024 budget coming up.
Right. So this contract actually obligates the city for the 500 one-time, or is it an annual thing?
It's, it's, it's the whatever's annually appropriated within the budget that's approved.
In the budget.
Right. So there's no specific dollar that is identified in this CIC contract.
Okay, now I get it.
That is what comes forward with the budget request every year. So the only thing that has changed is the language that actually clarifies what eligible expenses are and can be used for.
Okay. And one of the other things that I did say in the CIC meeting is, is that I, to give an idea or the thinking about some kind of performance measures, since we're increasing the level up to such a higher number. Director, did you have a chance to look at that?
Well, I, I think, again, we, we don't know what those anticipated costs are. They would have to be discussed and brought to count, to the city for consideration as eligible expenses, and they would be in that list that's in that document. You know, I didn't probably put anything, everything in that list, but if, if somebody runs a truck through a building, you know, we're responsible for managing that situation as a CIC. So they just can't go and spend the money. They have to bring it back to the city and say, is, this is an eligible expense we believe is covered, responsible for holding property. Does that make sense? Can I answer the question?
Yeah, it does. I'm sorry. I, I was pausing only because I was actually thinking through what I know about the CIC's procedures. So it would be presented to the treasurer or the real estate committee. Is that correct, or how does that work?
So I would think, knowing the way CIC, the process for CIC is the real estate committee would present that to the board as a whole, and then the board would vote whether or not to submit that to the city as an eligible expense. to submit that to the city as an eligible expense.
Understood. Okay. No more questions? Thank you.
Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may be a question for Mr. Malarsky, as I'm not an attorney by trade, but my question here is that, you know, this is under Section 3, City of Gehanna Obligations, Item 2, which seems to be the bulk of the change. It says, "The city further agrees to pay the CIC for eligible costs associated with holding purchased properties through the program until transferred, et cetera, et cetera." I guess my, my question that I would like clarified here is, CIC obviously has its own Board, semi-independent, there's a couple of members of council on there, but generally speaking, would this change mean that a Board action would ultimately obligate the city in order to do something without an active council?
I don't see how that could possibly happen, but if you could point out the section to me, let me.
This is under Section 3. Three? Item 2?
Number 2, 3.2, or the red line, the one, the red line language is.
It's red line.
Section 3.2.
And, and I guess I'll, I can further expand on that a little bit. So the, the portion that is not being changed reads, "The city agrees to pay CIC eligible expenses through the implementation of Gehanna Land Bank Program," right? So typically, how this works is there's a desired property. We meet, you know, pursuant to, you know, the rules of executive session and say, we can talk about these types of things, and then we either agree to move forward or we don't. But ultimately, council makes that decision. What I would like clarity on is, is this, is CIC's Board, by way of this change, if they make a decision, does that come with contingencies on the city where we would be forced to make further action?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
I don't want to, I guess what I'm trying to minimize are liabilities to the public purse. I mean, the CIC is supposed to be kind of a separate entity. I think it prudent to keep it that way. I would rather not find that Board making decisions that ultimately obligate the public tax dollars that have not already been granted to us.
Mr. Schnitzer, I, that's, that's one of the reasons why I was actually asking on the record about the connection with the dollars and the budget. So if I understand, if council approves, we've already approved the 2023 line item for 200,000, so they can spend up to 200. And then the, from what I understand, the 2024 has an additional 300, so that gives them more, if I understand the, the way this, the mechanics work.
And I think that the term eligible cost is what makes that work, because the city is only agreeing to paying certain costs, not all costs.
So would it, I, I understand, I think I was understanding where your question was going, so thank you for the question. I mean, I, I agree, CIC is an independent quasi-governmental organization that should remain somewhat independent, but at the same time, we want to make sure there's a stopgap, that it's not just a never-ending request. Would it be helpful if we were perhaps to add language, and I'm spitballing here off the top of my head, "City agrees to pay the eligible expenses through the implementation of the Gehanna Land Bank Program," something like up to the amount that's approved in the budget or appropriated in, in any, in the fiscal year or per fiscal year? Would that help?
That's what most contracts say. Caps and limits always, you know, help.
I know. Yeah. That's why, so I looked at the sentence and I went, yeah, it doesn't really have a cap on it, but if we were to add some, some language in there, that it was, it somehow limited it to whatever amount had been appropriated in, in that budget year.
It's progress?
Yeah.
I guess I'd have to see the language.
I appreciate that.
And there's also language we can add that says, "If it's not appropriated for that year, then this becomes all void," basically. We use that in several contracts as well.
There are questions on that end, isn't there?
Yeah, I, I mean, ultimately, I guess what I'm trying to guard against here is an unfunded liability or an unfunded mandate, you know, to use more colloquial terminology.
Sure.
Just, again, we, I mean, council's the power of the purse. It's probably the, you know, the heaviest tool that we have, and I think it should stay that way, right? We're beholden to the residents that have elected us.
Absolutely.
The CIC Board is not. And it's not to disparage them, but we need to keep tabs on kind of where the public dollars are going, and signing up for any kind of an unfunded mandate is, you know, for me, it's a non-starter.
Sure. Now, and I, I agree with the concern. I think if we, if we were to add some qualifying language to, to that effect, that could, that could address the concern. Also, keeping in mind that the CIC Board does include two council members as well as, as the mayor is, is a stopgap too. However, that being said, the contract is a contract. So we, we've had, if I remember, some extensive conversations around the placement of a comma in this, in this chamber, so let's, let's be careful about it. So I think we can add, we can add some language to that. The question would be, from a procedural standpoint, then, because we are, do we, what is the timing on this, Director Hammonds?
Well, they would have the opportunity for the first reading at the next council meeting, and then there's another committee of the whole.
So if we, yeah, if we were.
The vote would be on December 18th, then at that point. So that, I think the thing is that we would like to have the 2023 monies available to the CIC.
In January. In January, without the need for emergency and waiver. So, so the goal was to have it first reading the 6th, second reading, and vote the 18th, which then would become effective January 18th, roughly.
Correct.
For the monies to, to be used for that purpose in January.
Madam Mayor.
Well, I don't know that they would be used in January necessarily, but the money would.
Or after, right?
Correct.
Because of the diagram.
It would be made available, and then expenses could be brought forward. Finance Department could determine that those are eligible costs, and then it would be covered.
Let me ask then, the funds that were appropriated for 2023, so the concern is that if this does not happen, the amendment does not happen by the end of this calendar year, then that we could not, that the CIC could not use the 200,000 that were appropriated for this year? Is, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know that that's the case necessarily. I would probably have to.
I'm looking at Joanne.
Yeah, I would probably have to.
I mean, the appropriations for the.
Come on up front, Joanne. Director Burry, thank you.
Thank you, Director.
I mean, I think this is just an extension of the, the land bank arrangement, so I don't see any reason why those, that that money was carried forward to 2024, which it sounds like that's going to be the idea, is to carry those appropriations forward on a purchase order, that once this agreement becomes amended and effective, that we could use those appropriations in accordance with this contract. So I think as long as it's passed before they come forward with reimbursable expenses, then we're fine.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers.
I'm not sure that that answers my question about the timeline and the why. So I, I think I understand from, Director Burry, from your finance perspective, the 2023 appropriations carry forward and any invoices or accounts payable, you know, payable, you can still pull from that 2023 appropriation, even if it's in 24. I think the question for me is, why does this amendment need to happen in order for that 200,000 that's already been appropriated to be utilized by the CIC?
So it can be used for the purchase of land through the land bank, and I think that's where the contract kind of stops. So from a perspective of somebody coming in and auditing us, if they're seeing that go for anything else besides the purchase of land, that might be questioned, because when you look at the purpose of the land bank and the contract language as it's written, it talks about the purchase of the property, but nothing about after that property is purchased.
Yeah.
It's silent.
So Joanne, this would give us some legal grounds to go back and say, no, this is an eligible expense.
Right.
Because we've amended the contract to include these types of expenses.
Right. So what are those anticipated expenses that are requiring this to be passed by December 18th?
I think that some of the, some of the issues are property taxes. I think the demolition is going to be a big one, and that's going to be early in the year. We could, I said that we will know by February if we're going to get the money from the Ohio Department of Development. That could be earlier than that. That could be in January. I think, you know, insurances, hazard mitigation, we've been doing property security as that becomes necessary. We've changed locks, we've changed doors, things of that nature that are incurring expenses that I don't know that people had planned for those kinds of things, when, you know, they, they buy the property and they have it, and it's like, oh, my gosh, just like when you own a home, you have all these issues of maintenance and taking care of the property as you go forward.
If I could, I have a question that maybe will help to clarify, I hope. I'm not sure if I'm following the conversation, but Director Burry, if I'm understanding you, is, are you saying that if we are going to roll over what has been appropriated already in the 2023 budget for spending in 2024, it would be cleaner from an audit perspective if that, if this amendment were to be passed before that happens into 2024?
Well, I think, I think if we roll it forward and the contract language is amended, just as long as, once we're going to spend those dollars, when the reimbursement request comes through, that it's following the contract.
So, so then to that point, it doesn't necessarily have to be passed by December 18th?
Correct. But I was, I think there was some concern about potentially those real estate taxes coming through.
To summarize, thank you. What I'm hearing from Ms. Bowers and what I'm hearing from the directors and the mayor is, from, from a city's obligation standpoint, from timing, timing is, does not matter. That money's been appropriated. But from a CIC standpoint, the tax bill is coming due, as are other, other costs associated with holding the property, and, and that that is the impetus for having, having this pass sooner rather than later.
And, and having it pass without an emergency or waiver.
And I appreciate that.
Because keeping in mind that once it passes December 18th, we still have another 30 days.
Yeah.
So the, the whole timing of looking toward that was, was in mind. We, we didn't want to bring it forward with an emergency and waiver.
And I do appreciate that.
Thank you. So I, back to, if I could, Chair.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions. So if I understand correctly, property taxes are usually due in January?
They are, yeah, they come out in January. I think you have some time to pay them. I don't think it's due necessarily on the date, but yes.
Okay. And you mentioned that there were some unplanned expenses, and could you explain why they're unplanned?
Well, damage to doors, damage to facilities that create situations that become unsafe to the public have to be taken care of. Things removed from buildings incorrectly, or, you know, that's something that needs to be taken care of, I think, pretty quickly, even before demo happens. I'm talking about one property in particular, which would be the old car wash. I think there are some situations there that need to be taken care of, even, well, particularly if we don't get the grant, that need to be taken care of, because it's an attractive nuisance at this point, quite frankly, and I think that we don't want to ignore that.
Could you provide us with a breakdown of those sort of unplanned expenses, and then what a proposed cost of demolition for the proposed properties will be?
Well, I do have a cost estimate for the demolition, which we submitted to ODOT, and it was about 325,000 for the basic demo, and about 225,000 for asbestos mitigation, which has to happen before demo. And then there's the cost of permitting, there's the cost of securing a manager, a CM for the project. So all told, it's upwards of $800,000 to achieve that, and that's for the properties on the west side of Mill Street, from basically where the athletic facility was, down to the former Pooch Place, without saying its name, and then the former office building on the east side and the car wash. So those five basic properties alone are $800,000 approximately to demo. So, I mean, I don't have a cost. It would take a while to figure out what some of those mitigation issues would be if we don't get the demo. But, you know, it's, it's thousands of dollars property to secure those, probably to secure those buildings.
So there's, there's a couple of things on this, and I know some of my colleagues still have questions as well, but on this particular contract, I appreciate Mr. Schnitzer and the mayor's comments regarding managing some of the language, the open language in 3.2. The other sort of factor I'd be interested in, especially since you mentioned the request for appropriation for 2024 as potentially being used to acquire additional property, so I would like to see maybe some limitation in these eligible costs associated with ownership versus what, what that.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see a limitation on this as well.
That's a fair statement, because we, we certainly don't want the eligible costs to escalate to a point where we can't afford to buy properties, so that's, that's understandable.
So I, I think what would be important for me as it relates to both this contract and the half a million dollar ask for the 2024 budget, would be some documentation related to the planned expenditures or unplanned expenditures in order for me to consider it.
Well, I, I can give you what has happened fairly readily, I think, if I get the costs from our finance person at the CIC. I, I can't really tell you what the unplanned costs were going to be, because they're unplanned. I don't, I can't foresee those, you know.
The ones you referenced today.
Right.
For example, the.
I can give you cost estimates, what I believe they might be.
Sure.
Yeah.
If you could itemize that for us, thank you.
Okay.
My colleagues.
Anything further? Yes, Mrs. McGregor.
So if there's $200,000 that was appropriated in '23, has any of that been spent?
No.
No. So if we, if we pass the budget and it's got 500,000, does that mean then they have 700,000, 200 from this year and 500 from next year, or is 200 part of the 500?
It's 2 plus 5.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Padova.
You said that you guys applied for a grant for the demolition, correct?
That's correct.
And what was the amount of that?
It's probably going to, it's, it's fluctuating a bit, because they're still doing some estimates on what is actually going to be included in the grant application. So we make that application to COCIC, which does that on behalf of the entire county. So all the communities give their application to the COCIC, and they will massage it somewhat to make sure that all the costs are applicable. The, the costs that were submitted to the ODOT were about $830,000. It's my understanding that that might go down a little bit, or it might go up a little bit, depending on what COCIC determines the actual uses to be.
Thank you.
For instance, I'm sorry, so we gave them estimates on what the abatement would be for the asbestos. We really won't know that until they go in and actually do a more further complete investigation. We had to get very quick information back to COCIC, because the application came in on October 31st, and it was made available to communities, and COCIC wanted it submitted by November 15th, which means we didn't have a lot of time to get hard numbers. We, we get, got pretty good numbers, I think, but that might come back higher, it might come back lower, as far as the asbestos and other minor things like that. Well, asbestos is a minor, but other minor things.
Thank you. I do.
Mr. Renner. Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for actually clarifying, because I'm the one that started this conversation, and Mayor, I guess you didn't hear what I was asking, but it was interesting that Michael Schnitzer was able to, you know, direct, so I appreciate that. It is council, and this is an unprecedented ask, and as Mayor, as you pointed out, we're, council representatives are on CIC, but I did say this, for the record, I did say this as CIC, that this is going to be a problem, and that we need to think about how we actually do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. I think, come. Thank you, Mr. Renner, I think, come back to committee, there's some requested clarifications, if those could be made, but I, I think, I'm comfortable putting this on for first on the fourth, pending committee of the whole, put it on for first, come back to committee of the whole on the 11th, and then we can see where we want it at that time.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Jeremy, at the moment, regular agenda, but we'll make a decision at that time, so, Continued discussion on the C V B related items here?
Yes, me again, thank you, sir, and thank you, council. Previous meetings, we had discussion regarding the C V B, visit Gehanna, and I presented information at that time and how much money was obligated and so forth as percentages of the bed tax. Tonight, Director Lori Kappas is here with a guest to answer some of the questions that were posed previously, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, you may need to make sure your mics are on.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. So, I am here with Andy Herf, he is the executive director of the Ohio Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus, so hopefully what, if there's anything I can't answer, he can. But I did want to go ahead and present some of the financials from this year, particularly with Creekside Blues and Jazz Festival and then just general C V B funding, so you had that information to look at, I think it was sent out to you, but we also have-
Want me to present it now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for Creekside Blues and Jazz, we keep this budget separate from the regular C V B funding that is lodging tax, and just side note, I think I've mentioned this before, but we are, as a convention and visitor bureau, audited by the state every other year, so the last, so 2021 and 2022 was audited and it was a clean audit, and that's available on the auditor, state auditor's site, if you want to take a look at that. But for Creekside Blues and Jazz income, this year we were over the number we budgeted by about 10,000, pretty much we were over budget in the income categories in every line except for partner support and sponsorships. So, then when you move down to the expenses side of the event, we, you can see that we did make a profit on the event, which is helpful for events like holiday lights because we do use any, we use some of the overage from the event if we have any to go toward holiday lights, and those funds in the budget are not obviously closed out yet because it just happened, so. But in looking at those, are there any questions for me about?
Director Kappas, would you mind sharing with us the number of staff that are included in the salaries and benefits, including part-time and, and contract help?
Oh, is, in the, in the next, in the next one for just C V B?
Oh, yeah, I jumped ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead and answer that now, or?
Sure.
Okay, we have three full-time staff people.
Three full-time staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on just the C V J F portion?
Sorry.
All right, thank you, Director.
Yeah, so moving on to general C V B, you can see the lodging tax, it actually, I presented this back in September, but I'll bring it back up, that in 2019, the lodging tax that the C V B received was 342,312. Obviously, in 2020, that was significantly affected and was down 55% to 166,949. It has since then been slowly creeping back up, but it is still not back to 2019 numbers, and we are, at the moment, so the 178,677 in income for lodging tax is actually now, that was through the end of October, so it's now 204,818 with, when you include this month's income. So, it should be about even with last year, which is still down from 2019, and I, I want to bring this up because our hotels, two of them in particular are extended stay properties, and they are becoming increasingly, when you collect, when someone stays in a, in a hotel for 30 days or more, they're tax exempt, and these two properties in particular have been having more and more people stay for 30 days or more, for whatever reason, and so that is significantly affecting our lodging tax. So, I just wanted to make sure you knew that. So, basically, we have the lodging tax as income, and then we have some interest income, and then, as you can see, the expenses listed, and we are more or less within budget in most of the categories. Of course, we're not finished yet for the year, but we should be on target. And of course, the Creekside Blues and Jazz income will make up for some of the shortfall in the regular C V B budget.
Any questions at the moment? Mr. Schnitzer.
Yeah, just a minor question, the, the year-over-year, I'm sorry, the actual versus budget for kind of your general operating expenses, you said through the end of October?
Yes.
Okay, of course, goes without saying, the Creekside Blues and Jazz Festival was, was actual since it's in the rearview mirror, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, thank you.
Just to clarify, Airbnbs don't pay lodging tax either, do they?
Correct, at the moment, they do not.
Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, I don't know if you're, we're going to get to this, but I did want to talk a little bit about lodging tax, and I wanted to thank you, Director, for the sit-down a couple of weekends ago, thank you so much for your time, and, and I appreciated it. The lodging tax, it's my understanding that Gehanna collects 6%, is that accurate?
Correct.
And you did, you did a review of other municipalities and their rates, and what did, what did you find that that 6%, how does that stack up to peer communities and municipalities around the state, and maybe if Mr. Herf wanted to weigh in on this as well?
So, we, we do have a chart, and I think Jeremy provided it, and it, you know, several communities in Franklin County do collect 6%, some collect four, it's kind of all over the place, it's all over the place statewide, I don't know, Andy, if you want to speak to that at all.
Thank you, Chair Weaver and, and Councilwoman Bowers, yeah, it's hard to quantify, it's, it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison with lodging taxes, some communities have a municipal tax, some communities have another tax, I'll get to those in a second, a lot of communities also have a county-layered tax, so Franklin County has a tax as well, and then they'll divvy that up amongst some of the individual jurisdictions, and then the city tax kicks in as well, and even trying to compare what the rate is versus similarly situated communities, some communities have two hotels, some have six, you know, so how the income comes in is, is, can be pretty, can be pretty broad, but I would say that nothing but 6% is outside the norm, I think some of the highest jurisdictions in the state goes highest 10, and other jurisdictions, especially if it's a county and they just have a simple county tax, could be as low as three.
If I recalled the chart from my review of it, 6% seemed to be about median for Franklin County, is that correct, is that a fair recollection of that chart?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't want to interrupt the presentation, so if you wanted to move forward before I-
I really just wanted to present the, the numbers for you, more or less, and then also reiterate, I, I know you know this, but just for the, the general public, we do have a board of 13 members, and we, many of them are here this evening, and from lots of different backgrounds, and many of them are Gehanna small business owners and/or residents of Gehanna, and so we do have, we, we do have a good cross-section of people and several representatives from the city of Gehanna on the board as well.
Chair, thank you, thank you so much for providing the list of the board of directors, a lot of the, the members there are familiar to many of us, and thank you all for your service on this important board for our community. So, the structure, if I understand it correctly, and it's a 501(c)(6) nonprofit-
Correct.
And, and we do have, and we being city council, does have a, a member, a voting member on, assigned to that board, appointed to that board?
That is correct.
Okay, and are there other, there are other members of the administration that also serve on the board?
Yes, we have Stephanie Farrell from Director of Parks and Rec, we also have Jennifer Hackman from the Economic Development Department.
Okay, and how long, I know that you're, you have not been in Gehanna as long as the C V B has been in operation, I know our mayor was our former executive director, how long, and maybe Mayor Jadwin can answer this question even quicker, but how long has this type of, how long has this organization been in this form?
2008, I believe, Karen Alon was the first-
Karen Angelo, Karen Angelo was a council member at the time the C V B was formed.
I think it was, it was not 2008 because I was actually off at that point.
I was thinking 2005 myself.
I, I think it was before, yeah, it was before that, it was right, 2001 or, it was, it was not.
Actually, it was, it was earlier than that because-
It was earlier than that.
It was earlier than that, it had to at least be 2000 or 2001 at, at the earliest.
I could look it up on my thing where I have the, we had-
No, I, I could tell you it was at least 2001 because 2000, 2000 or 2001 was the first year I volunteered for the C B J F and the C V B was formed already, so it was either, it might have been 2000.
Okay, so 2008 might have been when they applied to become visit Gehanna.
2008 is when, is the Gehanna events was dissolved and then rolled into the C V B, that was, that was, 2009 is when it became effective, 2008 was when that action took place.
Okay, so those are the, the articles of incorporation that I found?
Right, that would explain that, right.
And how long have, how long has the city been directing lodging tax to the C V B?
Since its formation, because that would have been required under the Ohio Revise Code.
So, so if the city had not directed at least 50% of the lodging tax, then tho, all of those dollars would have gone to a, a county fund, is that my understanding?
Back to Franklin County, I believe.
Franklin County.
If, if there's no C V B, Director Herf, Director Herf, correct?
It's meant to be directed to an organization that's recognized as a C V B by either the county commissioners or the city, and if it, if there is no such existing entity and the city were to pass a tax, because the thing that creates the C V B is the original passage of a tax, under 573909, and if that doesn't happen, if there's no C V B for it to go to, it goes back to the county. Can you make sure your microphone's on, Mr. Herf? Oh, I apologize, is it better? Oh, there we go, yep, that's better, thank you. It's just too far away. Appreciate it.
I, I, and, oh, sorry, another, one more, a couple more questions, so you have external finance review, an accountant or, or an audit process, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, so we do have an outside accountant, and then we also have the audit that's done by the state every other year.
Okay, and those are available through your board, or how do you make those audits available?
We do have, we have them and also the state has them.
Okay, all right.
And they're available on the Secretary of, the state auditor's website as well, the state auditor's, every other year, audit is.
Excellent.
But it spans the two years, they audit both years.
Got it. Well, thank you again, Director, for your time, that's all the questions I have, and I, I thought that, I've mentioned this before, I thought the 2023 C B J F was one of the best ever, for lots of reasons, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you for providing the most recent financials, just a couple of observations, I recall being quite surprised, my, when I served on the board, that the single largest line item for the Columbus, or I'm sorry, the Creekside Blues and Jazz Festival is tense and fencing.
And porta-potties.
Mayor Jadwin, when you were on, when you were the executive director, kind of sweating, you know, writing that check, like, where's the money going to come from, still got to write the check whether people show up or not.
Right.
So, that's why we always cross our fingers and, and say a quick prayer for fair weather. And then lastly, I, I, obviously with revenues being down with the lodging tax, it seems like you guys are trying to hold the expenditure side down pretty hard, and, and it looks like, what was it, the advertising, I'm sorry, on the operating side, that the advertising expenses were going to come in well under budget, assuming you don't write a big check in November or December.
We do have a handful of things that we-
Spoke too soon.
That we commit to at the end of the year, so there will be some more expenses.
Well, it, it looked like just on a, at a minimum, on a straight-line basis, dividing everything up there by 10 and multiplying by two, that maybe you're going to come under budget, so, on the operating-
We probably will still come a little under budget, yes.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnitzer, anyone else? Well, let me just echo the thanks that have been made, I appreciate you being here, thank you, Director Herf, for being here as well, also to the members of your board, thank you for joining us. That said, we've already had first reading on both of these, is it the will of council to move forward with a second reading on the fourth for both of these items?
Yes.
I'd be fine with consent.
Are folks fine with consent?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, consent for both items on the- Consent for both items on the fourth, please, Jeremy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, items from the Department of Finance. Welcome back, Director. You might as well get comfy. I think we still have a whole other meeting after this.
So the first item before you is a request for an ordinance to amend our purchasing procedures under Gehanna Ordinance 133.02. So with the state biennium budget, there were changes to Ohio Revised Code 9.17, which sets the competitive thresholds for bidding. So that was increased to $75,000 effective October 3rd. And it stays at $75,000 through the end of 2024. And then at that point, it increases by 3% each year. So kudos to state legislators for bringing us up to, up to speed here. We have historically followed Ohio Revised Code, but we could set those thresholds higher if we desired. But following Ohio Revised Code is perfectly acceptable. So just requesting an amendment for that. The second part was when we passed the purchasing procedures. One thing that came to light is there's a lot of processes, procedures, services that we have continuing contracts for, or contracts that kind of renew automatically from year to year. And we didn't really have anything in the purchasing procedures to address that. So as part of the amendments, we added those continuing contracts as not requiring competition as long as they're evaluated by the department director and the fiscal officer. And it's determined that it's not cost beneficial or feasible to send those back out into the market.
Anything from, thank you, Director, anything from council? I did have a question on that last one with the change to the, well, I guess, clarifying the exception and adding it there. So is this only available then when there's an option to renew?
Correct.
Okay. So I have a three-year initial term with two optional 12-month extensions. We would then not have to go out for bidding to exercise those options?
Correct.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification. Okay, are folks okay with first and consent on that one then?
Sure.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is a request for an ordinance to amend our municipal income tax code, City Code Section 161. So as many of you may recall, when House Bill 5 was passed back in 2015, it required that all municipalities follow Ohio Revised Code 718 for their municipal income tax codes. And we changed that in December of 2015. What that does, though, is every time the state makes a change to that code, which there were changes to Ohio Revised Code 718 with the biennium budget, it then requires us to go in and amend our code so that we're matching Ohio Revised Code 718. So these changes were outlined in Ohio Revised Code, and we're now incorporating them into our city municipal code. And I just have those changes summarized there real quickly for you. So 161.03, that talks about the exemption on income for those that are under age 18. There was, there's some language updates there that talk about that if we passed an ordinance in 2016. So giving that authorization language to allow that exemption to continue. The next section is 161.062i. This section deals with net profit taxes and remote work. So on the withholding side for individuals, that's already been addressed, previous with the 20-day rule. If you work in a place for more than 20 days in a year, you automatically withhold. There wasn't really anything to address, though, net profits in either business owners or their employees working remote, because then those profits are technically earned where that remote work is happening. So this provides that apportionment, the same as it does for individuals for those net profit taxes based on where those owners or employees are working remotely. The next change was 161.091a1. There wasn't really any substantive changes here. It's just adding municipal income tax into the language. For 161.094a, they changed the extension for businesses. They give them an extra month. They changed it to the 15th day of the 11th month. For individuals, it's the 15th day of the 10th month. 161.094f, so this deals with extensions. So if somebody does file for an extension, we, tax administrators are not allowed to communicate with them until they actually make the filing. If a tax administrator does communicate during that extension period, then we would be subject to $150 fine for the communication outside of compliance with the code. The next two changes deal with the penalty for nonfilers. So they're allowing the current language to go through filings through December 31st of 2022, which the current language is $25 per month for each failure up to $150. They are now changing that penalty language to $25 maximum for each failure. There's no limitation to be for each filing. However, once they do make that filing for the first time after failing, we have to reimburse them, that $25 that we charged them. And then the final section deals with adding in the language for not, for net profit filers to follow Ohio Revised Code 718.80 through 718.95, rather than our municipal income tax code, which allows them to file with the state tax commissioner. And the state tax commissioner then distributes those collections to the appropriate municipality. And those are all the changes that went through Ohio Revised Code 718 that we are now incorporating.
Anything from my colleagues?
Yeah.
Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you, sir. So, quick question. In layman's terms, Section 161.0311o? Does that mean that those under the age of 18 are exempt from all municipal income tax across the state of Ohio?
Correct. As long as they, that was their ordinance passed in 2016. So that was always in our income tax ordinance. So we had always exempted those income under the age of 18. So if he had already done it, then he didn't have to. You just had to add the authorization language within there.
So that's a local choice, not the state, not the state making that choice for local governments, correct?
Well, I think they still have to exempt it. It's just based on, it's just the language that goes in there. So if you hadn't exempted previously, you're basically stating that you're now exempting under the age of 18.
So the state is mandating it?
Correct.
Do those under the age of 18 pay state income tax?
Good question. I'm guessing no, but...
Be curious.
We can see.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Director. Are we good with first and consent on this one then? All right, thank you, Director. Next up, items from council office. We have first conversation on the, well, ordinance that would establish a tobacco product sales licensing program. Turn things over to you, Ms. Podova.
Thank you. So, a draft was provided this morning, afternoon-ish, to everyone in council, as well as the mayor and city attorney. That has been updated. The main things to note is the 1,000-foot radius for youth-oriented facilities. Parks has been removed from that. Since there are quite a few locations in Gehanna, we have a lot of parkland. So we did remove that from the radius for youth-oriented facilities. We also took out the police and code enforcement language that was in there. So it doesn't prevent our police or code enforcement from doing anything that they normally do. And no city resources are going to be affected with this ordinance. We did keep the must-post signs and shall-not-sell under 21 and no free samples, even though they already exist under state code, just to have extra enforcement mechanisms. And we also rectified the issue of appeals going back to the same department that issued a suspension by sending them to the court. So I believe that with these changes, we have, we have taken into consideration all of the, all of the notes from the administration, as well as Mr. Malarsky and Assistant Attorney, Mr. Roth. So I would like to put this on to, on for first reading next week if council is okay with that.
Thank you, Ms. Podova. Any, well, first I'll see if there's any comment from the mayor or the city attorney.
The only thing is, I still would like to see an MOU between us and Board of Health to see what, how that's set up. The one, the only one we have is from Hilliard. It was an example given to us. And that one's not exactly a great one, because like part of it says, the city agrees to manage the civil penalty process. And we're not doing that. So I'd just like to know what the MOU is going to be between us and the Board of Health.
I believe that, my understanding with our meeting with the Board of Health was that once we pass the ordinance, then they would work with Miranda on the contract for that. So I think that it's, I think we have to pass the ordinance before they start working on. That was my understanding of it.
And just to clarify, the document that's attached as the final version as of 11/27 on the agenda, is that, that's the most up-to-date version?
That is correct.
And the city attorney as well?
Yeah, as far as I know. I wasn't handling this. Keep in mind, if we do pass this, though, until we get the MOU, it can't go into effect.
Yes.
Anything else from my colleagues on this one?
I have a couple of questions.
Mrs. McGregor.
This is going to be technical. Okay, under 737.11.
Point 01?
11.
Point 11.
And then under D, there's three sections that say after number 1, 2, and 3. And I am not an attorney, so this may be typical language. But it says, "After a first violation of this section at a location within 36-month period, no new license may issue." Should that be "may be issued"? I don't understand. Does that...
This is lawyer language.
Is it, is it okay?
It could say "may be," but "may issue" is also acceptable.
So the other, because it's in three different sections. The other thing was, at the, it's some, oh, where is it? Oh, shoot, hang on just a second. It's something where it says, "The United States and State," oh, here it is. It says, "It may be preempted by the United States or the state of Ohio." Is that an accurate description? It should be United States of America, United States government? It just seems like an incomplete. But that's, again, I am not an attorney, so it just seemed odd when they say "state of Ohio", but just "United States."
I mean, it could say that because, I mean, America consists of, from Canada to Argentina. And so, the United States of America...
Was it government of the United States? I don't know. It just, it seemed like...
The federal government is what you want to refer to.
The federal government of the United States? It just seemed like Ohio, the state of Ohio seemed descriptive, but United States did not seem that specific. Is that... You what? It's okay? All right, I don't care. If it's okay, it's okay. Again, I say, I just, in my layman's reading of it. Okay. That's the only question. If it's okay, it's okay.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah. Really, the Public Health Department actually, they insinuated that we have to pass this before they would even give us a draft agreement of what the interaction, because they've always said, and we've always known, that we'd have to have some type of agreement. Did they not have something, or...
So they gave us the, the draft that they used for Hilliard. As like an example. Yes. But my understanding, unless Mayor, you understood that differently, but my understanding was that we pass the ordinance and then they will work on the contract between the county.
That was my understanding from when they were, when we met with Commissioner Missola.
Is there fundamental opposition to that path forward?
Unless there's a legal reason.
Ms. Heywood, you mean?
If that is, if Franklin County Public Health's ideal is that we would pass the ordinance and then we can negotiate the MOU, which it sounds like they've offered a draft, do we view that as a fundamental issue with moving forward in a prohibitive way that...
No, as long as, like I said, we, as long as you understand that it's not in effect until we get the MOU.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
We'd have 30 days from the time it would be voted upon and passed before it would become effective anyway. So that gives us 30 days to negotiate an MOU and get that signed.
Correct.
Ms. Bowers?
Just to that point, and Director Volmer, this may be at your, you know, based on your schedule as well. But, I mean, we can push our effective date past, you know, into mid-January, for example, or, or January 31, or, or set whatever effective day we want. That way, it could give a little bit of leeway to the administration. I don't want to go much past sometime in February. But I'm, I don't think that we have, I think that that would, I don't, unless somebody sees an objection to that, I think that that would give us a little more breathing room.
So could you add language for the ordinance that says it becomes effective 10 days after the MOU is signed? Or is that something that...
The only thing, my, my only hesitation with that would be just notice to business owners, I suppose. So I'd, I'd rather give them a notice date and then make sure that that's enough time. I just want to be respectful of holiday time.
So I... I think this might clear, so the wording in this is that the license term is one calendar year beginning on March 1st. So they will give 60 days notice to business owners before March 1st, which would be like January. That would give the administration about a month to get things cleared up. I think, I think that this timing would line up well with...
Is this on 1st? I'm sorry, I'm not...
We would be, this is, we would be setting it for first reading on December 14th, second in adoption, excuse me, December 4th, second in adoption on December 18th.
So then it would go into effect January 18-ish.
But that wouldn't stop, oh, yeah, you could, right.
Yeah, so the, the MOU or any contract we need to sign with Franklin County Health would not come back before this body, because there's no cost associated with it. So that would, that'll expedite things. So it's my understanding from Franklin County Health that if there's some indication that this will be eventually passed, they're willing to start working on that. So I can contact them this week and find out, advising them of our schedule to see if they can meet that timeline as well.
I actually think we'll be more flexible in terms of our timing.
Well, then, just to put a bow on it, then, we'll put this on for first on the 4th. And then I, I don't see a need for this to come back to committee unless people have a strong preference. a strong preference. Great. And then we'll put it on regular agenda for the 18th then, please. All right. We have a liquor control notice. Mr. Clerk, turn things over to you.
Yes. So, City Council received the notice to Sexton's Pizza LLC at 921 East Johnstown Road. They're relocating. So I did forward this to the Police Department. There were no objections. The only action that would be required is if City Council objects, you would need to vote on that at your next meeting.
And from counsel.
No objections. Do we know where they're moving to?
They're, it's up.
It's, let's see.
Next to the OSU facility.
They're, they're not, they're not actually moving. They're just expanding. They're opening a second location around the corner, like it's a burger and burger place.
Where Grinders used to be, they're opening a Sexton's Burger Bar. So they're taking the pizza, the license from the pizza place over to the burger bar. It's my understanding.
Yes. The application says 943 East Johnstown to 921 East Johnstown.
Thank you.
No objections then? All right. Last up, we have a resolution expressing gratitude for farmers market volunteers. Ms. Bowers?
Yeah, I don't have a draft ready yet, but I did want to bring it to the attention of council since it may bypass another committee and just come onto a regular agenda. The Make a Hannah Yours Farmers Market Team has retired after five years of providing a farmer's market to the community, and so I've been in touch with some of those volunteers to ask if it would be okay for us to recognize their service and the importance of the farmer's market to the community, and so looking at coordinating a date to adequately thank them. So just wanted to put that on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for the committee of the whole? All right, we're seeing nothing further. I recognize that it is Cyber Monday and would encourage folks to participate in Giving Tuesday and the Give to Gehenna campaign. And without further ado, we'll adjourn committee of the whole and turn things over to our Finance Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Jeremy, just give it to me when you're ready.
Ready.
You good to go? Okay. Let's commence Gehenna City Council Finance Committee for November 27, 2023. As per usual, the process last couple of years, we have pre-submitted questions that have been turned over to the administration. That will guide our discussion. In addition to that, there was kind of a broader ask for, I guess, a presentation with regard to the new positions that are being requested in the budget. I think it would probably make sense to take that presentation first because it may help to inform some of the answers that are forthcoming on the list of questions. So if the administration would oblige us there, we'll tackle that staffing presentation first. So I assume, Director Volmer, that's you?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I have, it's just, there's no PowerPoint slides, but I can pull up the ones from last time if that's helpful. Does anybody want me to do that for the org charts?
Just kind of direct everyone's attention, sure. If it's not too much trouble.
So we will start with the new positions in the mayor's office. So the, there's three new positions here. There is the Management Analyst, so I'll talk about that one first. That position will assist with sustainable efforts for current and future city projects such as 825 Tech Center and partner with departments to ensure sustainable efforts are being pursued on all projects and programming. So this includes in the budget book, there's $150,000 funded for a sustainability plan as well as $100,000 funded, being requested for the strategic plan. So in addition, this position will also, the sustainability plan and the strategic plan will work on those, the community survey, and then assist also with grant writing and locating grants, and then the compliance that's required after we receive the grants. Would you like me to stop after each one, or?
Well, it's the will of the council. I guess if there are questions regarding the output, maybe we, we take them. So perhaps maybe a one Mississippi, two Mississippi, and see if anyone jumps to the mic.
Okay. Great. The next position funded here is the Administrative Coordinator. So this position, Administrative Services includes the departments of IT, HR, Finance, and Mayor's Court. Those departments do not have any administrative coordinators or assistants at this time, so this position is to assist with those high-level administrative tasks for those four departments. These tasks include communications related to property damage. If you might remember, the property and liability insurance was moved under the Department of Administrative Services, and so there are some claims that the city receives that we manage internally. So this position would assist with those property damage claims. They would assist with budget monitoring, purchase orders and invoices for the DAS departments, support system management. Munis is our human resources system and payroll system and finance system, and then in the, in addition to another, a learning management system. They will assist with HR tasks such as scheduling, hiring, interviews, assist with personnel file management, IT inventory management, and other related administrative tasks.
Please continue. Thank you.
In the marketing and communications side, there's a request for an additional marketing and communications specialist. This position will manage and coordinate the city's multiple social media channels and overall social media engagement with residents. In addition, they'll be responsible for managing and maintaining the city's newly designed website. With the increased Parks and Rec programming and events, and in addition with increased Parks and Rec programming and events comes marketing needs as well, and then promotion of the city for economic development marketing.
Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. I think, just broadly, could you explain? I, I mean, I understand this is, I think it's verbatim on page 61 of our budget book, right? So, but what is not getting done now that requires the three new positions? Like, could you explain that need?
Sure. So for the Management Analyst, those, the strategic, sorry, let me flip my page back. So the city is in the works to create a sustainable plan, so that requires someone to do that effort. So this, the Management Analyst would assist with that effort to get that done, as well as with the strategic plan. There's a little, many facets that need to be done with that, so they would assist with that as well, and then ongoing management of those two plans. In addition, the city's, has a consultant assisting with grants right now, but we would look to bring that in-house so we can get information quicker. And then from a financial perspective, once we get a grant, there's compliance on the backend that we have to do. So the more grants we're applying for, presumably we're getting more grants, there's more compliance that needs to be done as well. For the Administrative Coordinator, all those tasks I mentioned before, those are parsed out between folks like myself, Director Burry, IT Manager Carter, HR Manager Nolan. We, we don't have administrative support for the DAS departments, so that is, and with the taking on of the risk and managing that in a more effective way for the city, it is a large burden that we need assistance with, so it can be done at a more appropriate level of the organization. For the Marketing and Communications Department.
Wait, just, can you, so, just so I make sure I understand correctly, so Director Burry, yourself, and Director Schultz do not have an administrative assistant at this time?
We do not. The mayor's administrative assistant helps us as well as economic development, marketing and communication, the law department, the front desk, all sorts of guys.
Okay. All right, thank you.
For the Marketing and Communications Specialists, as you see and you guys attend all the Parks and Rec's different events, those events need marketed, they need advertised, they need graphics created. There is a quarterly Parks and Rec guide that's put out, so there is one individual currently, and that's primarily all of her tasks. So the economic development, marketing, the city's newly designed website, the city's social media. I know they don't sound like a lot of things, but those take a significant amount of time to manage and maintain, because once a new event gets created, it has to go on social media, it has to go on the website, there's descriptions that need written, there's mailers that need done. That takes a, it is a large burden, and so in an effort to do that more efficiently and have more resources to it, that's the reason that we need a Marketing and Communications Specialist. The new website was designed to be easier for residents to find the information that they need, and so you have to have people giving that information and writing that information for residents to be able to find it easier.
Mr. Weaver?
Quick follow-up, Mr. Chair, thank you. Are you able to advise what the salary ranges are for those positions? It's something I would be interested in for all the new positions, so.
Yeah, I can send you.
I'm good with an email follow-up.
Yeah, email follow-up, maybe tomorrow or something.
And when I bring the salary ordinance forward, too, all that, it'll just, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
And just so when you get the, so like, a Marketing Communications Specialist is a pay grade C-13. How we budget for that is we budget it at midpoint, which is step five. So a person could come in typically lower than step five typically, but we do benefit, or we do budget for step five with family benefits to ensure that there's enough money in the budget. So when you get that information, just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Yep, Ms. Bowers.
Just related to this. If I, I think, if I recall correctly from the budget, in the IT department, there's an IT support specialist that's been requested as well. My question was, could the IT support specialist support the existing communications staff to share website management as a cost shaving measure?
No, I have a very long list for that position when I get to it. The, the management of the website is not a technical management of the website, it's a content management of the website.
Right. I, yeah, I understand that, but there's existing com staff. And so I guess my question was, is could, could some of the technical work be split into, to the new IT work, to the new IT specialist?
I'm, I think we might be using the word technical in two different ways. When I say technical, I mean like the back end of the website. When I say content, updating event calendars, writing content, that is stuff that the marketing and comms team is doing.
Right, I get that. Yeah. Okay.
Anything else from counsel on all things under the mayor's office? All right. Please continue.
The next department we have is Public Safety. This will be information that's directly in the budget book and that I shared last time, I believe. Chief Spencer's here if you have additional questions on the public safety aspect. But the request is for two additional sergeants. These two sergeants would be assigned to field services or patrol and would significantly improve supervisory coverage. So right now, there are four patrol sergeants. If I brought the schedule up, you would see that there are always days throughout the week that there is not a sergeant on duty, which means we have an officer in charge. An officer in charge does go through a training program to be an officer in charge, but is not a assigned supervisor. So this additional, these two additional sergeants would provide a relief supervisor to provide additional coverage. So what a relief supervisor means is that there are two supervisors, for example, assigned to second shift patrol, so that all seven days of the week are covered by a promoted There is a high rate of days currently that are being led by an officer in charge instead of an assigned shift supervisor. So this will reduce liability to the city and help to guide and develop the new workforce as we are hiring more officers. That equals younger workforce, and we need promoted supervisors to guide and develop that workforce.
Anything from counsel on that? Thank you.
The next request from Public Safety is for an additional high school, or a school resource officer. This is funded out of the Public Safety Special Fund. This is necessary to address and prepare for the increased number of students and staff within the Gehenna-Jefferson Public Schools. One of Chief Spencer's goals is to create a safe environment where students are free to focus on their education as a goal of the division, so the additional SRO will help the division keep pace with programs and services provided within the schools as that population increases and the district expands. In addition, this will provide a relief factor when those officers use their leave that is provided in their collective bargaining agreement to provide coverage at multiple schools in the district.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. So looking at the chart for this one on page 89, it looks like we have a pending retirement in the SROs.
That is correct.
So this would be an additional officer, and that retirement position would be backfilled as well?
Correct. So right now, because we know of that officer's retirement, he's indicated that to the city, we have already backfilled his SRO vacancy so that that new officer, that's been, it's not a brand-new officer, but so the officer assigned to the SRO spot can be trained and be established within the school.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hearing done.
HR, HR has no additional requests. Finance has no additional requests. Neither does Mayor's Court. So the next one is the request for an IT support specialist, too. This position will answer support tickets and provide a second level, second-tier level of support when necessary. This person will become a subject matter expert on several different technologies that the city operates. In addition, they will assist the network and systems administrators when necessary, assist with training classes. Example, we have Microsoft 365, and there's a lot of programs in Microsoft 365, so we're looking for somebody to assist with training classes there. They'll spearhead computer inventory rollouts for lifecycle replacement, create and maintain support documentation, and serve as a project technical specialist on new projects. For example, the learning management system that I indicated we were, HR is implementing now, the IT manager is actually serving as the IT technical specialist on that project, whereas it's more appropriate for a person at this level to serve on those smaller-type tech, technology projects.
Anything from counsel?
Are, are all of the positions filled, or are there any vacancies currently?
There are no vacancies in the IT department.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on.
The next department is Engineering. The request is to add an administrative assistant. The administrative assistant will assist with answering the many phone calls the engineering department receives on their various programs such as the street sidewalk utility projects, assist with resident communications, assist with accounts payable, accounts receivable, complex reporting, and a variety of other administrative tasks. As we add additional capital projects to the budget that fall in the Department of Engineering, there's a large amount of administrative tasks that is involved with those different capital budget, or capital items, specifically with communications when streets are closing, sidewalks are being repaired, utility lines are being replaced, et cetera.
Anything from counsel? So real quick, Director, you had mentioned, it sounds like a lot of what that individual will do is communications. Can any of that be pushed over to, I guess, some of the staffing that's over in the mayor's department, mayor's office?
So the Engineering Department is the one with the subject matter experts to draft those letters because they're engineering-heavy, and so that's, so it's more of, once the letter comes back from the comms team, this individual actually gets the letters out to the residents and answers the, Director Comlett can tell you how much. and answers the, Director Comlet can tell you how much the phone rings down there, because right now, they're, it's disrupting other folks who should get calls screened.
Understood. Anything from council on engineering? Moving on.
Next department is public service, and I believe one of the questions submitted was regarding the leaf pickup program, which Senior Deputy Director Wyman-Singer and Director Anvers will talk about later, but the primary reason to add the maintenance worker one is for the, as the division works towards implementation of a leaf collection program, staffing additions are critical to make that program come alive. Associated with this as well, there is capital money in the budget for the leaf collection program for equipment, but they will discuss that later.
Wait until that presentation, then.
They have many of the information for that question.
And then I think you had covered on the prior presentation, the intern was to backfill and try and build that pipeline.
Yeah, so the fleet technician addition is essential for succession planning. We have three tenured employees out there, one with a retirement date pending in quarter two of '24. The other two technicians have retirements planned for 2025 that they've made us notice of, so this is to fill essentially, much like we do with police, we fund a position prior to a retirement for training purposes, so once those three individuals retire, the plan is to go back to the four, not the five, so. And then the fleet interns is additional with succession planning and a workforce development program, we're working with Eastland Fairfield Career Schools on.
Thank you. Anything from council on public service?
This might tie in with Parks and Rec, which is coming up, but it's a related question to the succession planning question. Are there imminent retirements within three years anticipated either in public service or in Parks and Rec that would influence the operation's spending projection?
I know of one pending retirement in public service. I'm not aware of any in Parks, or in Parks.
Okay, and that one, was that taken into consideration when generating the graph on page 214? Thank you.
I believe you're talking about the five-year projected?
Yes. Little Roman numeral two.
So you're talking about the general fund, five-year projection? Well, public service, a lot of their employees aren't paid from the general fund, so that pending retirement more than likely is coming from the proprietary or the street, I'm not sure which employee we're talking about.
Okay.
So no, but the five-year projection for the general fund assumes that all staffing is going to stay status quo. So even if there's a retirement, it assumes somebody's going to slide right into that position, so it keeps the staffing at a consistent, even though we're aware of retirements. And the objective behind that five-year is that if we're successful in those transition plans, that we won't have any gaps in operations, because things will continue as they are.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from council? Please continue.
In the Department of Planning, there's a request for a additional of a building inspector. This will assist with reducing the reliance on third-party consultants and inspectors. That will help us keep the permitting costs low and increases the city's ability to perform last-minute inspections. This would also be, we don't have any notice of any retirements, but we have seasoned tenured employees as a chief building inspector, chief building official, and building and heating inspector, so this would also play into the succession planning as well. That is a very difficult position to fill, so.
Might be diplomatic on that one. Anything from council?
Thank you.
Are we, sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Weaver?
Are we, no objections to the add, but I guess in terms of inspections, are we on time, up to date with our inspections, even though we're going out to outside consultants?
If required.
Yeah.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Well, I guess, can I ask?
Yeah.
So, is there, will we realize a cost savings by bringing that? I understand that there's also the succession planning aspect of it. Will we realize any cost savings, or it'll just be a net change, but not, not to zero?
We should realize some contract services cost savings pending we can fill the vacancy.
Okay.
Anything further from council on the planning? Moving on.
The next section is recreation. There's a request for an additional recreation coordinator, too, for events. This position will provide the necessary support to expand special events in the volunteer program as outlined within the Parks Master Plan. Some of those special events include the farmer's market, summer votes at Creekside, and overall event support for the various events that the department and the city puts on.
Anything from council on that item?
I have a question.
Come back to me?
Yeah, it's not related to that position, go ahead.
The second, the second one on this slide is for an addition of a project inspector, one. Parks and Rec Department has approximately $8 million in capital projects in progress or planned for 2024, with the passage of issue 12 allowing for ongoing and planning of capital projects, and the Parks Master Plan, this project is vital to get those projects off the ground and completed for residents.
Anything from council on project administrator? Come back to you.
It's not related to that question, it's related to maintenance workers.
Okay, so we can move on to Parks?
So for Parks, there's two requests. The maintenance worker, two, with the implementation of the next phase of the street tree program, it will require additional staff to maintain and expand those services. This maintenance worker, two, would be placed on the arbor crew. Arbor is a technical trade that requires specific skills and expertise to be safe and effective. The current team consists of four full-time individuals. The small staff are responsible for the care and protection, as well as the expansion of the urban canopy, maintenance of over 14 acres of prairie, health and aesthetics of park trees, invasive and hazard removals, as well as tree inspections. Resident communication and community outreach is part of our Tree City USA designation, so this position is vital to keep those programs moving forward.
Anything from council on that? So, Director, my only question is, is how's that currently being performed now? Is it through contract services? Or is it just not getting done?
I'll let Director Farrell answer your question in a more complete fashion.
That's fair.
Short answer, yes, but as Senior Director Volmer stated, with street trees, that's going to only expand the requirements of what we need to do, so it will, again, expand the work, which we need the individuals in order to accomplish those tasks.
Thank you.
The second request from Parks is for a maintenance worker, one. At the golf course, this position is cost-neutral, as we'll be eliminating two part-time vacancies. The golf course is open a majority of the year, typically from March to November, maybe into December if the weather holds out, and requires significant hours of upkeep. It's also important to succession plan to ensure individuals know how to cut those greens properly, for all those golfers out there, Miss Angelou. I know Senior Director Schultz still owes you a round, so I won't let him forget. So that is the request for that maintenance worker, one. Again, that is cost-neutral, as two part-time vacancies would be eliminated.
I do have a question.
Yep, Ms. Bowery?
Related to that. So you identified the season, so the off months, so to speak, how would that staff time be used? I told you I had one coming, you know, you knew.
So there really is no off months. In the months that the course is not open, there's still a significant amount of prep that needs to be accomplished, so those individuals would be able to help our supervisor, Joe Hebdo, which Joe Hebdo works a significant amount of hours, in order to give him the support that he needs and some time off that he is well-deserved. An individual is definitely necessary to meet those needs.
Do we lose any flexibility, or conversely, what do we gain by moving from the two part-time staff to the one full-time staff?
One thing that we've recognized with having part-time staff is we haven't been unable to actually fill the vacancy of a coordinator. The skills that we need this individual to either have or to learn is not something that most individuals have as a typical skill, so bringing on somebody and keeping them has seemed to be a challenge. So having a full-time staff member will only help us to expand their skill set and keep them, but then also have, fill the vacancy, because that's been a challenge.
It is a challenge globally to hire part-time employees.
Sure.
Benefits. Thank you.
Anything further from council? All right, I think you might have one more?
I do not.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you cover the project admin?
I did, yes. That's okay.
Okay. Anything, I guess, I'll open it up one last time to council on the staffing presentation. Going once, going twice? Okay. All right, thank you very much for that. We'll dive into the discussion questions. Tried to organize these kind of by category, obviously there's some page references here. So the first one, just read it as written, page eight. Please advise if there's a cost identified for the citywide strategic plan update, and what is the project timeline, and will there be a community workshop component to that process?
So Senior Director Wyman-Singer and I have got preliminary quotes for that. They range anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000 for a strategic plan, because it will be a new strategic plan, the 2016 plan is now outdated, so the entire plan will need redone. Yes, there will be a community workshop component to that plan, as well as a community survey. The project timeline would look that in quarter one, we would work on the scope of work, issue a request for qualifications for that, and send that out and get those back to move that progress, to start that project sometime in quarter two.
I assume it's kind of implied here, how long do you expect that to land? How long will it take once you start or kick it off in Q2?
Likely the majority of next year, probably.
Anything from council on that?
Can I ask a piggyback question on that?
Sure, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you. All the, talking about plans, I recall conversations happening towards the end of last year about the possible need for a refresh of the land use plan, and that five years out might be a decent time post-COVID, given the change and what we're seeing in terms of demand for property usage. Just whether or not that was considered in discussing potential fan, potential plan funding, excuse me.
Well, for 2024, what is included in there is an economic development strategy refresh, so I think that those two kind of interplay. So for 2024, what we're requesting is for that economic development strategy refresh.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anything further from council? All right, thank you, I'll take the next one here. Page 60, the ask was just to be prepared to discuss the goals and objectives of the mayor's advisory committee. I assume, Madam Mayor, that's you?
That would be me, in part, and I'm going to probably ask, call upon Director Hammond as well. So this is really a business advisory group. The group would be comprised of representatives of our local businesses. One of the main goals of the group would be really to strengthen the ties that exist, and I think we have an opportunity to build upon those between the city and our businesses. Over the last three years, we've seen significant economic growth, and that growth has come not only from attracting new businesses here, but seeing our existing businesses expand and grow here, and we want to see that continue. We want Gehanna to be a welcoming community, a good place to do business, and this board would effectively, and I'm more advisory group, would really just be a sounding, a sounding board, is what I meant to say. Wanting to know what challenges our businesses are facing, how can we best address them, whether that's code changes, whether it's permitting processes, whether there's further promotion, whatever our businesses need, we want to help them grow in the community. This is an initiative I've had on my whiteboard for some time, and Director Hammond has actually had some extensive experience in these types of boards and groups, and I, groups.
Yes.
Sounding board advisory group, there we go.
Well, this is not a policy-creating board. I like to call it a panel. I've done it in other communities where I've been. It's a great opportunity, as the mayor said, to have dialogue with a wide cross-section of employers. I envision maybe 11 to 15 members appointed by the mayor, was certainly with my input, but it's a great way to understand business trends that are happening out there, to communicate with businesses on their needs. I've also found it's a great way to get into the community in a little different way, because a lot of the Chamber of Commerce members are the small businesses, and they have their own needs of providing their members with services, whether it be, you know, discounted insurance or what have you. This is an opportunity to talk directly with our primary business leaders and talk about policies that we have and how we can make them better, so that we don't ignore what the factors are and how we can balance the community resident input with the business input. It's worked out very well in the past when I've done this. Sometimes I pick people to help us with being a quick-response panel, so that when we have businesses that are coming to look at whether they want to come to Gehanna or not, we can react to their needs and provide information to them from the business to business, as opposed to just the city. So it's a great way to communicate, and the best thing about this is, it's not only going to cost anything, except maybe some coffee and some pastries once in a while. I envision maybe three to four times a year meeting for an hour and a half or so, and it also provides them an opportunity to express things that they otherwise wouldn't tell you in public meeting.
Understood, thank you. Anything from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to human resources, this can be found on page 12 of your budget book. Budget shows a decrease of, looks like, three and three-quarter full-time equivalent for the Human Resources Department. The ask was to please share more context around this change and where the existing workload may be diverted in light of that reduction.
Yep, so there were two interim positions that were funded out of, requested from HR next year that are not requested for 2024, and then the remaining 1.75 is a reallocation of centralized staff to a new administrative and operational services division in the Finance Department. So if you refer to the HR chart on page 69, you'll still see the HR manager, two HR administrators, and an HR representative there. The senior director of administrative services, the senior deputy director, the risk and management administrator, and the DAS management analyst were all reallocated to the Finance Division that I spoke about before, so there is not a decrease to HR staff.
Thank you. Anything from council on that question? Seeing none, okay. Next one, very next page, page 13. Full-time hourly personnel is expected to decrease by seven, full-time equivalent. Again, same ask, please share more context around this change and where the workload may be diverted.
Yep, so if you refer to the increase in salaried staff on the same page, you'll see the movement of those folks over there. So as we talked about before, when vacancies occur, we look at those vacancies, determine what kind of position needs to be filled based on the work that needs to be accomplished. So those, during 2023 and into 2024, those hourly positions were reimagined into other positions. For example, if you remember, last May, I came forward and asked to change an administrative coordinator in the Department of Planning to a planning manager. So in the budget this year, that would reflect a reduction of a, an hourly full-time person and an increase to a salaried full-time person.
Thank you. Anything from council on that question? Seeing none. Next section, public service, page 99. The ask was to please provide more detail surrounding plans for a citywide leaf collection program, including any research surrounding necessity implementation date, also whether staffing would be internal or external, and what positions would be needed because of the program.
All right, well, thank you. I'm Corey Wyman-Singer, Senior Deputy Director of Administrative Services. With me is Director Sean Anvers, Public Service. Page 99 of the budget document identifies immediate and long-term priorities for the Public Service Department. The city currently does have a leaf collection program, as you're aware, through local The city currently does have a leaf collection program, as you're aware, through local waste, right? We bag it up and we put it on the curb every Monday for collection. But what we want to do is grow this program to include more collection options for our residents. What we're working towards is a leaf collection pilot program. Is, as we continue to engage residents at a lot of our community events, a desire by residents continues to become more and more robust, especially this time of year, for an enhanced leaf collection program, right? One of our primary objectives remains to manage and recycle fallen leaves efficiently, effectively contributing to cleaner environment, reducing our landfill waste, minimizing our stormwater issues, and fostering community engagement. A pilot program will serve as a testing ground, allowing us to fine-tune our strategies based on real-time data and resident feedback. Upon reviewing other municipalities in central Ohio, it is a common theme that our program is minimal in comparison to some. And expansion should be prioritized in '24. Internal staff or potentially a hybrid approach, which would include internal and external collaboration, is and will continue to be analyzed by us. Director Anvers met with representatives from similar-sized municipalities, to include Upper Arlington and Westerville, to understand their processes and what all their complexities of a program as we continue to enhance it looks like. The initial scope of this program is still being defined. There's multiple levels that we can work towards. Expansion of our yard waste drop-off options. In '23, we did have a couple of weekends where we did open up to do yard waste. Implement weather was a factor to one. Some of the expansion in '24 would include potential more options like that, or more intermittent bag pickup rather than once a week. Would it be, would we be able to do more than once a week pickup? The biggest lift in '24 request includes the acquisition of the proper equipment to our public, to allow our Public Service Department to safely work curbside, allowing us to vet a program and get to a point where we can offer curbside bagless pickup. Those are the big vac trucks that everybody is desiring. So currently, one maintenance worker is being requested in the Streets Division budget. This position will assist us greatly in rolling out this pilot program. But will also be utilized year-round outside of this program, because we have a lot of other public service priorities on that list that need to be addressed as well.
Anything from council on that topic?
Yeah, I'll be. Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Bowers.
I appreciate all that, and I guess I'll just, I am open to hearing more, but at this time, I'm not going to support a curbside vac truck program. I'm concerned about the general fund budget and some of the drawdowns on the proprietary funds. And we have a lot of other projects that are in the works right now. I understand that, I live in a heavily treed yard. My husband breaks his back on leaf pickup. But I don't see how it fits into a strategic plan. I don't see how it fits into sustainability initiatives with more and more calls for leaving leaf cover. And so I'm open to hearing more, but I don't think that this is the right time to include it in the 2024 budget. And thank you for your presentation.
Anything further from council? Mrs. McGregor.
I would tend to agree. We used to have a city leaf pickup program, and it's really a no-win situation, because trees fall, leaves fall at different times. Oak leaves fall all winter. Some trees fall in, in a neighborhood will fall in September. So you go down there in September, then you got more in October, and it's impossible to get them all. I mean, and then you also have a problem with drainage. People won't want them on their tree lawns, so they rake them into the street, which interferes, which interferes with the drainage if we get lots of rain. So it's a, it's going to be a hard sell for me.
Mr. Weeb?
Chair, so, and thank you for the presentation. When you say pilot program, are we talking a limited area? Or, explain more by what you mean by a pilot program.
Yeah, so initially, we're not quite to the point to where, if we want an expansive program like Upper Arlington has, which it would include seventeen trucks, twenty persons, twenty individuals, and an eight-time pickup cycle. That's a quite expansive program, right? So what we're working towards is something that is a little more fiscally conservative, because right now, with the leaf collection and pickup that we currently have available in the city, we don't necessarily have anything in our current fleet that can address any of the even storm gutter issues, where we're talking about clogging and utilizing that. So what we would be evaluating in this program is working with our GIS team to identify some of the best areas for leaf collection, right? We have all the tree counts, we have the canopy cover, and identifying what areas would be the most impactful to utilize this, because what we need to do is continue to understand collection rates for rate per mile. How long is it going to get us to actually pick up, you know, per parcel in what areas? And so there's a lot of data that we still need to collect before we would really recommend pushing out a more robust program. But we still want, and that's just with the vac truck side, but there are still other factors that we do want to put in.
So, I guess, to me, it, please, if I'm off my rocker, tell me. It makes more sense to me than to contract out for a pilot program and with a, that has a vac truck, do a season, or, you know, however you want to structure it, versus going out and acquiring a vac truck.
Well, and these aren't necessarily vac trucks. We have a vac truck that we're going to, that we have utilized for water and sewer. This would be a more specialized equipment just for leaf collection. It's not your six-hundred-thousand-dollar vac truck that you see that we have. But in doing so, we did look at, you know, this is that external component as well. In working with other communities, this is a program they do in-house. There are not a lot of vendors that can do things on a larger scale. You will see people around, I saw on my way here tonight, you know, smaller landscaping companies that are out there that are doing it parcel by parcel. But for a lot of the leaf coverage we have, and from what we are hearing back from residents, especially out in some of these heavily leafed areas, it's a lot. And so what we wanted to do was work towards a potential, a long-term solution without committing ourselves too much financially. If we were to do a larger program, it would be, you're talking probably seven figures if we were going to do any type of outsourcing of this.
So I think that speaks to my concern. I guess, I'd, I'd be curious if we were, wanted to explore a pilot program of, and again, tell me if I'm off my rocker, that, similar to the relationship we have with New Albany for administering a mayor's court, could we test that relationship out with a UA or a Westerville? Or some sort of, another municipality who might have a more fully implemented, robust program? So I, it sounds like you don't want to create a program from scratch. You've done your homework, I got that. And I also want to be sensitive to the cost, but I also want to support some method of exploring this for the community, because I do hear, I think it is something that residents would like to see.
And just to piggyback on that, when talking with Upper Arlington and Westerville, I don't want to put words in Director Anvers' mouth, but the program that they currently have is an animal in itself. They are maintaining it in expansion to come out to Gehanna, or it did not seem like it would be a feasible option for them. They are working seven days a week, ten-hour shifts with all these trucks going. It is their number-one biggest service that they provide there. If they could do away with it, they said they would, they can't. It is a large, massive feat.
I think that answers my question, and I think might answer a few other questions up here. Why? Okay, all right, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Renner, Ms. Bowers, and Mrs. McGregor.
So, first question, did I hear correctly that we don't have trucks to do the asset management of our stormwater systems? Do you not have vac trucks that are dedicated just to our stormwater?
For stormwater, we do, yes, yeah.
Okay, but, so you're not visioning using that for this?
So in talking with our utilities superintendent, the truck that we're using now would not be ideal for the leaf collection for what we need it for.
Okay.
But that was explored, if that was a current option that we had.
I understand, I understand. I, I, I'm interested. I think it's a good thought experiment. I'm not sure it's matured yet. There's dubious claims about sustainability, because now you're adding another large truck with diesel or gas, whatever. We already have leaf service, you know, and so we're, you're, you already have trucks that are spending that gas to actually go pick that up. And now you're adding another one, and so I don't make, I don't think I really understand the full claim. And then, as Councilwoman McGregor already, you know, pointed out, you're going to add to the tension of the problem with the drains themselves. We have a lot of people that are blowing, oh, right now, stuff into our drains, and we're not doing anything about it. So this, I don't think, is actually, in my opinion, going to alleviate that issue. And then, and we're talking about yard waste, well then, I mean, leaf. Well, what about yard clippings? Where does it stop? Because it's the same issue. Do you have any comments on that or anything?
No, I, we're just, the feedback we've been getting is from residents that want the ability, like a lot of other central Ohio municipalities, is to basically rake or blow them to the right-of-way. The city comes and vacuums them up, and it's a service they would like to have offered.
Yeah, residents want a lot of services, but I understand.
Ms. Bowers.
Mostly, I'm fine, but I just want to, especially, we're familiar, like, we hear it, right? We know from our, from our community. But I think one of the most important things that I noticed was the feedback from the prior experiment. This was before, I think, I even lived in Gehanna. I've been here for over eleven years now. But the residents who were here could attest to the fact that it created more problems than it solved. And so, not for you all, but for our residents who maybe did ask about this. And I know that it comes up from time to time as a wish list item. But I think that, you know, it's incumbent on us to look back at the history and to look back at the efforts and the attempts and say, okay, you know, I understand that that's a service that you want. How, this is what happened when we tried it before. These were the obstacles. I'm interested in how many communities in central Ohio are actually doing it. I mean, you've identified two. I don't, I don't think, Wester, excuse me, I don't think that Reynoldsburg or Whitehall or Columbus or Hilliard offer it at this time. Is that right?
Actually, we're, actually, we're one of the very few communities that does not provide this service. Reynoldsburg does not, I'm not sure about Whitehall, but Hilliard does, Dublin does, Worthington does, Westerville does, Grandview Heights does, Bexley does.
At no co, at city-funded?
City-funded.
Vac truck.
Yeah, they all, it's not a vac truck. It's more of, I would call it a vacuum. It pulls behind a dump truck, and they, obviously, it shoots the leaves into the back of a dump truck that has a slide-in box.
And every, the communities that you've talked to have talked about how costly it is to the city?
Yes.
And how much, how much burden it puts on city staff to administer.
I just think it's been their culture for so long that they have geared their operation up, that this is the service that they're going to provide their residents.
Yep.
Upper Arlington was the one that I did visit and actually went out on the road with their supervisors.
Yeah.
It's probably comparable, it's probably the most comparable city to Gehanna far as lane miles, as well as residents, and it's a big operation. They all, you know, they run seventeen dump trucks. They run twenty, twenty maintenance workers.
Yeah.
And they run six, six vacuums. So they put a vacuum in each one of their six zones, and they work it across.
Yeah, well, at the end of the day, you know, we'll be accountable to voters and, you know, have to have these hard conversations.
Yeah, because that's probably the main thing that I've gotten in the short time I've been here, is why does our neighboring municipality offer this, but you guys don't?
Yeah.
So that's kind of how it came about.
Mrs. McGregor.
I meant to say, one thing you did bring up was the ability to dump yard waste at the city yard. That, when we stopped doing that, that was, a lot of people, they impacted that, and that's really not, that's more our residents taking the extra stuff there and dropping it off. And I know that many of them would like to have that back. And that was not so labor-intensive as the leaf pickup. But I mean, if you didn't have to chop up all your rose bushes and hedges and stuff, and you could just take them down there and dump them, it would be a help.
Anything further from council? Directors, my, I have two questions about that. This has been explored in the past. I remember when Dottie Frain was here, and she had mentioned a similar seven-figure cost to do it citywide. But I believe at that time, what was being explored was farming it out through something like a rumpke or something like a local waste services. Implicit in that conversation was the fact that residents could, if they wanted that service, get it themselves, meaning they could call up some entity and do a month's worth of pickup or whatever, obviously at their cost. I just wonder if you guys have checked into that, and maybe some sort of bulk contract could be offered for residents that wanted it. Not everybody has a ton of trees.
And we can explore that. As of right now, residents, as perceived on my way over here, some residents currently do that, because I can see them out on their own, getting picked up. But the city, you know, we haven't explored, us, do we, going back to that pay-for-service where the city is the middle person?
Okay.
It can be something we can do if we want to be in the middle to manage that. But as of right now, residents do have the ability to contract themselves out. Just going back to the feedback of residents of, you know, a more universal program.
Understood. I just wonder if maybe the city doesn't have a role here, like, we had some folks take to the podium a couple of weeks ago about municipal aggregation, right? And, you know, something like that, right? If we could say, hey, we promise you five thousand households, you know, what's your bid? And then people could sign up that way, just a thought. Then my other, I guess, question or comment is, a majority of council has raised some concerns about this, so if it is ultimately stricken from the budget, does that impact the need for the maintenance worker ask? In any way, shape, or form?
In my opinion, because, because that is a window of time for the programming, that we do have needs here at the city for additional maintenance worker ones. There's a lot of projects and a lot of work that needs to be done for that level of employee.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, this one falls under the ARPA funds, pages sixty-two and one-twenty-eight. So a couple of questions. Which organizations received ARPA dollars through the community grant program in 2023? And is it known which organizations will be recipients of the remaining grant funds to be dispersed in 2024?
I'll just start to give Director Wybensinger a chance to?
Please, Madam Mayor.
Shift. So, council, you should have received earlier, prior to council, a spreadsheet with all of the organizations that received some funds. I apologize for not sending that earlier, just so that you have that. And then Director Wybensinger actually was in charge of that program, so he could speak in more detail with regard to those organizations.
Yep. So for that program, the 2023 Community Grant Program, it's September first, we released the grant publicly. We contacted directly over thirty nonprofits here in Gehanna, or those that serve Gehanna residents, not to mention website advertisement, social media boosting, things of that nature. We did receive back ten applications for funding. Of the ten applications for funding, it equaled a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars in requests. As you may remember, the '23 budget was fifty thousand dollars. We had a application or grant review committee review the ten requests that came in. The committee was two residents and one member of our economic development team. And they worked to allocate funding of the fifty thousand dollars. Based upon the programming, we had kind of a 1A Based upon the programming, we had kind of a 1A, 1B, which would be food and clothing instability and mental health services. Those were kind of the priorities we were looking to ensure that we are, were assisting our nonprofits with. And then, kind of a 2, was the overall community improvement to city of Gehanna. So the committee took quite some time to kind of dig through all of the requests and to examine, some were funded partial, some were funded in full, but to really try to maximize that $50,000 and make the best impact we could, or they could, to the city.
Thank you.
Do you need me to go through the list, or I know you have it?
No, it's in our email, correct?
Correct.
Anything from council on that particular topic?
Yeah, will the same process be used this year?
Yeah, so the plan is, we could always change criteria, but that seemed to be very well-desired by our nonprofits, was food and clothing instability and mental health services, and then general, overall, improvement to the Gehanna community. We will work to try to get the grant out earlier this next year, as some of the feedback we received was some of it would be nice to have early in the year for types of summer programming and things of that as well. We do anticipate to have that, you know, $100,000 allocation fully allocated after the end. But there are no, the other follow-up on that is, there are no that are perceived to be already assigned for 2024. It is a fresh grant application.
Anything from council? All right, moving on, thank you. Well, the next two questions pertain to capital improvement, I think I was supposed to say capital improvement fund. However, the first one is page 113. There's a line item for $500,000. The project is described as Woodside Green Pond Rebuild, and the ask is, is to please describe the work being performed, is this mechanical dredging, and is the pond being enlarged?
That's me. So the project is to dredge the pond at Woodside Green. There's a significant amount of sediment that has negatively impacted the water quality, so the dredge would be low-impact, so it would not be mechanical. And then the project also includes a small overlook, just to improve the recreational opportunity at that pond, mostly for fishing.
So this is not a track hoe in there?
It is not. No.
Anything from council on that? Mrs. McGregor.
What do they do with what they remove?
So, right now, in November, a bath metrics survey has been accomplished to identify the actual levels of sediment that we're dealing with. Along with that, we'll have a better understanding of the actual process to use. There's a couple of different ways to remedy the issue. There's a vacuum that you can also de-water, and that is actually the best dirt that you can get. So we could either use that to re-establish the banks, because there has been some erosion with that pond, and/or use that for other, other use within, within the park, within the parks.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last one for this evening. This pertains to the sewer fund, $400,000. A line item is described as Gehanna Lincoln High School capacity improvement. Just, the ask is, please describe the necessity and scope of work being funded by this expenditure.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
So, there's going to be a significant amount of investment within the Hamilton Road corridor in the upcoming two, three years. First and foremost, the Ohio Department of Transportation will be rehabbing the bridge over I-270, followed by urban paving project that will go from the city of Columbus northward on 317 up Hamilton Road, down Granville Street to about Lincoln Circle. So within that, the school also is doing its improvements to its site as the school is raised. Parking improvements occur, some adjustments to their ingress egress on Hamilton Road. We're looking at things from a holistic standpoint. The sanitary sewer in the immediate area is 70-plus or minus years old, improvement number SA5, so dates back quite a ways. So part of this scope and breadth of this work will do some condition assessments, providing some recommendations if there is inflow infiltration into the sewer for us to otherwise take corrective action. It's been noticed that a section of the sanitary sewer runs underneath the BP gas station fueling canopy, a less-than-ideal location. The city owns property immediately south of there, so we envision this, the scope and breadth of this work to relocate that sewer to city-owned property and then coordinate that with invert elevations as it ties into the school project.
Anything from council? Mrs. McGregor.
Does the school contribute anything to the?
So, as a part of the school improvements, as mentioned, they're going to be doing some storm-related improvements as part of their overall site utility package. They will clean, televise, and do any lining or point repairs to the system that is within the influence of their site.
Okay, thanks.
Director, is it a fair CliffsNotes summary of what you, of everything you just said to say, basically, while it's being torn up, we're fixing some stuff that's under control?
Yes.
Makes sense. Thank you so much.
Good job.
That's all for tonight from the, from our pre-submitted questions. Our next scheduled meeting is December 4th, so of course, one week from today. As things currently stand, if we're not going to meet prior to that, I'll just need any additional questions turned in to me by, I guess, Thursday at 5 allows me to batch them and get them into the administration's inbox first thing Friday morning so that they can convene and work on those. We're currently scheduled to meet the 4th, the 11th, and presumably vote on the 18th. I'm just throwing that out there, that if council thinks we need to meet more frequently, maybe start giving it some thought. But with, if there's nothing else from council, then thus concludes finance. All right, thank you, everybody.